Where the speaker is in this laptop?
What?
You do?
I think so.
Okay, start talking.
All right, I'm talking. I do have a few words I'd like to say at some point.
Um, I don't know. Keep talking, keep talking.
Keep talking. So we don't.
All right, let's just start.
It's the best we can do.
It's the best we can do.
Well, I can hear myself, so I just don't know if anybody else can hear me.
That's been your 22-year career.
All right.
All right, I think we're gonna get started. I'd like to call this Monday, December 18th, not the 4th, the 18th School Committee Meeting, Business Meeting to Order. Mrs. Yell, will you take the roll, please?
Me, where are you?
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Steve Cole.
Here.
Bruce Bennett.
Do you hear us?
No, I can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I'll say that on a present, just in case.
Okay.
Brian Callen here.
Here.
Juliet Walker.
Present.
Brianna Higgins.
Here.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands stand one nation under God, in the book of liberty, justice, and the Constitution of the United States of America.
All right, this is a big night, our last School Committee Meeting of 2023. I'd like to turn it now over to Vice Chair Hall.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin with public comment. First, just a couple of reminders. To keep to topics within the School Committee's scope, we encourage civility. Please be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting, which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion and that you will not receive a response at this time. You will have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the School Committee email. And first up, we have Lauren Aramo. Right, you can come right up to the mic here, and I'm just wondering if Bruce is going to be able to hear you. It would be nice if he could.
Oh.
Is there any way we can?
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like him to be able to.
Mr. Aramo, let's say a few things.
My name is Lauren Aramo. I live at 49 Kent Street. Knowing that this was the last meeting of the year, I wanted to be sure that I came today to thank Bruce Bennett and Steve Cole for their years of service to our community. As someone who has experienced Newburyport Public Schools from both the parent and the teacher side of things, I'm just here to thank them both for understanding that doing what's best for students is tied tightly to what is best for teachers. You always knew that, and I want to thank you publicly for your consistent and persistent commitment to the children and the teachers and the family of this district. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear that?
Bruce, could you hear that?
Yes. All right, Donna Holliday, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Chair, Superintendent, members of the School Committee. I'm here tonight for the same reason as Lauren. It has been an absolute pleasure, difficult at times, but a great, great run with Bruce Bennett and Steve Cole as members of our School Committee. Five superintendents? Six?
Six for me.
Six for you, five for Bruce, yes. So they.
Seven.
Yeah, right. They've been through a lot in terms of moving our school forward, and I'm so grateful for their continued support, always thinking about the children and the teachers for that matter. Amazing job. I mean, there were times where they were ready to step away, and we didn't have the kinds of people running for office as we've had this particular election. And I am grateful that there were times reluctantly they walked into City Hall and pulled papers. And so we're very, very grateful for the entire community for all the work that you did over these decades, whether it be... The one thing Steve Cole always brought to the table was his longevity and his institutional history. And I'm sorry that we're probably gonna lose some of that with your moving on because you had so much of that. And whether it was naming schools or remembering the Fuller Field and the people who they were named after, Steve was always there to tell us and remind us of the importance of the people in this community who have stepped up for our schools. And likewise with Bruce. Bruce was always the innovator and pushing the envelope. And the one thing I'm really, really grateful for is that one of the things that he championed was restorative justice. It was a really important piece for him and the fact that we now have that in our community to help move our kids along when they might not necessarily do the right things. And Bruce was always a champion of that. And the other piece was youth services that he always stood behind. So thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate all your great work for our district and wish you the best. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to student recognitions.
All right. Mr. Marcos, would you like to also come on?
Yeah, Mayor Redden.
All right, so as we do at every School Committee Meeting in the beginning, we have an opportunity to recognize some wonderful staff and also extraordinary students throughout our school community. And tonight is no different. We have some wonderful students that we'd like to recognize, and we have two groups of students, but we have one student first. And I should probably grab the certificates, Mr. Marcos. That would help. Our first student is Lucia Perucci, grade seven, and she's being recognized for her commitment and coursework. She's her commitment to leading by example day in and day out and always having positive attitudes towards her peers. From talking to faculty and administration, she's the first one to always lend a helping hand to those that are in need. So at this time, Lucia, why don't you come on up? Congratulations. Would you stay up here for a minute? If some parent wanna take pictures, come on up. This is your opportunity to ask for extra gift stuff. Congratulations. Our next students that we're recognizing, these students are being recognized for their extraordinary leadership throughout the school year on the Middle School Student Council, as well as also being great role models for their peers and maintaining a high academic standard. So these students, I'd like to call you up in a group. So we have Ruby Redden, come on up. Luda Fakzia, come on up. Audrey Ropa. And Gabby Smith. Once again, parents, if you wanna come up to some pictures. Congratulations, everybody.
Yep, we'll now take a few minutes recess.
All right, quick recess.
Who's gonna carry Bruce around? Where'd he go? No.
Special people here for some recognitions, but if anyone else wanted to say something right now, I would say this would be a good time to do that.
I'd like to say thanks to Bruce. We don't always get along, but it was always respectful, I believe, and fun. And Steve with his historical references. And now I will let him know that I had my own drinking water game that every time you started a sentence with many years ago. So that was quite frequent, so that was fun. Yeah, but thanks for your service. It's definitely a tough job from time to time, so you guys earn all the accolades you have received.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, and I'd like to just add my, I'm going to speak loud because I know Bruce is having a hard time hearing. Not because he's hard of hearing.
Oh, he heard that. Good.
I had the pleasure of serving with Bruce and Steve also on the Policy Subcommittee this year and very much benefited from their collective knowledge. I know it was, they've been on many previous policy reviews, so I appreciate their patience with that, going through it again. But it definitely was helpful to have their contributions, understanding, you know, hey, why was it this way? Or, you know, what, do you guys remember the context for this? And sometimes we did, and sometimes we didn't. But very much appreciated that. And both of them, I know, have also been involved at the state level with the MASC group, which I think brings a lot of, you know, credibility to our school committee as well, you know, that we're known. They have a reputation statewide, which is beneficial for us. And I appreciate that they have put the time in on that front as well. So you definitely will be missed.
Thank you.
Hey there, Bruce. Can you hear me okay? Great. I just, I want to say I'm so grateful to both of you, Bruce and Steve. Your past experience as Vice Chair has, you know, given me the support and, you know, the ability. I never would have been able to jump into this role on day one if it weren't for the two of you being there to support me and cheer me on. Bruce is also the person who encouraged me to run in the first place, so I'm grateful for that encouragement. And also to you, Steve, when we were candidates together and you gratefully, you were able to share your expertise, knowledge of school budgeting, and history of the school, which really, I felt your support as a fellow candidate. So I appreciate that as well.
I got nothing to say. No, I'm just kidding. Now, oop, I just closed them off. He's still there, Bruce?
He's still there.
Did it just slide away?
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, he's still there. I'd rather look at, welcome to Apple Music.
I'll put it back on when you're done.
It's all right. No, I just, I think during the interview process, before I was hired as superintendent, both Steve and Bruce, throughout that process, really, I think, not only articulated what Newburyport community and school community was all about, but I had that genuine feeling that they truly cared about the students and the families. And created a welcoming environment right away for me. And I would lean on them, both of them, for a lot of advice, a lot of the history, a lot of the tradition here in Newburyport. And I think it was instrumental in a successful transition plan for me coming into the district. But I think that really played through during the COVID years. You know, I think it's almost like we all forget about the COVID years. But I think a lot of districts throughout the Commonwealth were divided. There was a lot of fighting. But as superintendent, working with the school committee, working with Bruce and Steve, I think we all had the same mission of keeping everyone together when it would be so easy to divide people. And I really want to credit the school committee at the time, and also Steve and Bruce for really working together with all of us in keeping our school system together, keeping, allowing our teachers and students and families to stay focused on education and really not getting caught up in a lot of the rhetoric is outside of the schools. And I think, you know, that says a lot about people and the type of leaders people can be. I think it's easy to be a leader when things are going well, but when adversity happens, that's when true leadership occurs. And I just think, you know, not only the school committee at the time, but Bruce and Steve really had steady leadership during some, you know, tough times. And I truly appreciate that. But I know our faculty and support staff and the families truly appreciated that. And, you know, I think you never, people like yourselves are never replaced. Your legacy lives on. It's just you build upon the great things that you're leaving behind. So I want to thank you both, you know, for all of your, you know, efforts. I'm glad you didn't add another superintendent to the list. I'm still here, so. So there you go.
I'd just like to thank both of you for your service. I know it's a long time, and this is certainly a lot of work, and it's a lot of hours. So thank you for your service to the students and families of Newburyport and for being such great role models for our school committee members. Being the newest school committee member, I appreciated getting to watch and learn and listen from both of you. So thank you.
I think I'm going to invite up Kristin McDonald from Senator Bruce Tar's office. Senator Tar is running a little late, or he might not make it at this point.
Eventually, he may want to re-present these, but I don't think he is. His chair or said he is, he is booked, but.
So if you don't mind going to the mic, that actually captures the audio for our live stream. Thanks.
Hi. So I'm Kristin McDonald. I work for Senator Tar, and I do a very extensive roles to support him. But I specifically am thrilled to be able to acknowledge work of two people that do a job that I was once asked to possibly step into at Triton. My three kids are at Triton. And I said, oh, God, no. I couldn't. If my kids were littler, I would have loved to, but I know what a huge commitment it is. And I know specifically through COVID, what you all went through. I thought, thank God, I hadn't, you know, said yes. But I feel so much admiration for those of you who do devote all this time to our communities and our students. And Bruce is such a supporter of public school education. And Newburyport has had quite a beautiful new school next door. I just got detoured because a tree fell down on North Parkinson Street. I never even go by through the bridge. I think that you are going to be sadly missed. I was just, I have a trifecta of crazy things going on tonight. I was just at Fuel Training Studio where I have to work an hour a week for my friend, who was the owner. And Jessica Burke was the instructor the night. And I said, I'm going to the school committee to present to retirees. She said, oh, they're the best. So one of your teachers, Jess Burke. And she said, oh, they do so much for the teacher. You know, you're just such a, you both have been such teacher supporters, and that's huge. So on behalf of my boss, I'm here to present to you something that the state does to honor people with high credibility that deserve the awards of an official Senate citation. So I will read one. When I read it to you, the present physical body and you can. This reads that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this is an official State Senate citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Stephen P. Cole, Newburyport School Committee, in recognition of, don't have my glasses, sorry, your 20 years of dedicated and committed service to the city of Newburyport. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. And this citation, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It's signed by the President of our Senate, Karen Spilka, attested to by the Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, and offered up to by my boss, Bruce Tar, dated today, December 18th of 2023. So congratulations. Bruce Menon, in the far distance, can you see yours? It's coming your way as well for your 22 years of dedicated and committed service to the city of Newburyport. So thank you.
I was, I was working in Gloucester when Bruce ran for State Senate the first time.
Oh, really?
So I go way, way back.
Oh, so who knows? He might blow in just because of that. He really was thinking, he told me, just, I'm going to have you on deck. But just in case, meanwhile, I have a Christmas party to go to right now. So I told him, I'm going to do it, and you can do it again if you want to. So, yeah, he's a good guy. And he's someone, so I know what it feels like to work for someone who really cares. And, you know, it's just a really good feeling to have people, you know, that you work for like that. So I'm sure you are going to be, both of you are going to be missed. So good luck and enjoy your time that you will have back. And so who would take this for him?
I'll take it.
You take it? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, you're welcome. I know half of this team.
Hands up in the audience.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
No, no, no.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Kristin.
You're welcome.
So I also have two citations here from our Representative Don Shand, who also couldn't be here tonight. So I will read this for both of you as well. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Stephen Cole and Bruce Menon. In recognition of their over 20 and 22 years respectfully service to the Newburyport Public Schools, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 18th day of December 2023 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by our State Representative, Don Shand. So Bruce, we're going to have a pile of stuff for you, but we'll make sure we put this together. I also did a citation. It is not as cool as the state citations, but I did write a citation to Stephen and Bruce. An appreciation to your service and dedication as a member of the Newburyport School Committee, again, for 19, for 20 and 22 years respectfully. It is my honor as Mayor of the great city of Newburyport, Massachusetts, to extend to you the city's gratitude and appreciation for your commitment of leadership as an elected official in the city of Newburyport, given under my hand and seal this 18th day of December in the year 2023. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Bruce, I know you wanted to say a few words. Would you like to do that now?
Yeah, I did. I, my main goal was to express gratitude and try to speak a little bit longer than Mr. Cole does. So let's see if I can do that. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Chair Hall, Superintendent Gallagher, and my peers on the committee. These aren't the only expressions of gratitude I'd like to share tonight. I'm deeply grateful that this community continued to show faith in my work on the school committee and saw fit to keep me here for 22 years. I've always viewed the work of the school committee as holding an ongoing, evolving public conversation about who we are as a community, who we aspire to be. And also, we are the stewards of the most important investment Newburyport will ever make, which is that investment in our children. I have tried to always do my homework, to listen, to use the filter I felt mattered the most when I made decisions. What is in the best interest of the students and the district? My approach has always been to understand what we need to do to make something work and not spinning out reasons why something won't work. I'm grateful for the staff of this district, the excellent and the dedicated teachers, teachers aides, maintenance staff, and other staff. You've always inspired me to work hard, though I doubt I was able to work as hard as I saw you all work over the past 22 years. A special thank you to the teachers, whose dedication, professionalism, and skill have benefited thousands of Newburyport students over the years I have served, including my own two children. I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to work with some wonderful school committee members. Tonight, I want to tip my hat to four in particular, Cheryl Sweeney, Nick DeCantor, Sarah Hall, and Steve Cole. They have all set high standards for service and dedication that taught me something every meeting. I thank you. I would encourage the community to take a moment and appreciate the talents abiding here. Superintendent Gallagher is the educational leader that Newburyport saw it for years. In the six years I've known him, his moral compass has always been true. He's profoundly committed to providing every student with a safe and equitable learning environment. He's committed to this community and is a model for decency and clarity. Hang on to him as long as he is willing to keep here. There are challenges, these challenging times. While the district is moving forward to best prepare our students for the ever-changing future, there are those who challenge the most fundamental principle of any school district, to teach students to think critically and make good, informed decisions for themselves and their community. To do that, students need to have access to materials that inform them about all sides of an issue. I urge the committee to resist the temptation or pressure to remove books and other resources from our libraries. I know that some have already disappeared from our shelves, not as a result of district actions. It's my intention, once I'm no longer on the school committee, to provide some seed money to the district with the following restriction. Should books and resources that may be considered controversial disappear, the funds provided should be used to replace the books and resources. Buy two copies on me. When this comes before the school committee next year, I would ask you to vote to approve the donation. I will always be humbled by the trust this community has placed in me and deeply grateful for this chance to serve. I wish this school committee and incoming members, Andy Boger and Kathleen Shaw, all the best. And do your best work, my friends. There is a lot riding on it. Thank you.
Would you like to speak as well?
Sure, sure. I probably won't speak as long.
I win.
You did. I didn't prepare anything. When I, I grew up in Newburyport in the South End and went to the Brown and Jackman schools. And also, for a brief period of time, I delivered newspapers to Bradley Fuller's house. So I, when I first got on the school committee, I had this idea that I was going to catch his record, but not to be. I also worked with the late Joseph Stanwood on the Salvation Army Advisory Board. And, you know, we were both members for a while. I was chair. And I also, Norman Doyle was a member of that board as well. And I actually got emeritus recognition for Mr. Doyle just before he passed away. It's the legacy of those people, as well as the developing legacy, that everyone sitting here today, you know, bring us to the table in Newburyport that makes it such a fine place to live and a community that we can be proud of. Coming back or coming to the school committee was a reminder of what school was like for me in Newburyport. Today, it shows me how much it's changed, and changed in a good way. Now, we have all of our children and students going to school with each other for 12 years. When I first, when I went to school, you went to community, you went to neighborhood schools, which is good. But then, when you all came to the high school, you had to kind of reestablish your turf. And, you know, that wasn't always pretty. Today, I see a more supportive student body, and I think that's a really good thing. The other thing that I want to recognize is the importance of, there's five things, when I joined the committee, there were five things that I always paid attention to with respect to the quality of a good school district. One is safe schools. Two is highest student achievement at all levels. Three is recruiting and retaining your best staff. Four is the operational effectiveness of buildings, facilities. And five is making sure as much of every educational dollar makes it into the classroom. In that sense, teaching is of primary importance. As I learned when I used to run a residential program years ago, you can't have a school without teachers. It's that simple. So today, I just want to say, you know, thank you to everyone that I've worked with. I also want to recognize what I really believe is a very strong chemistry that this group has, along with the two new members that are going to be joining it. And I also want to thank, you know, my family, who's been supportive of me over the years. And also want to say that carm sees do not make a good sailor. And with that, I'm going to shove off.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Yes, thank you. Mr. Cole, you have the warrants to make?
Oh, yes, yeah. This is an honorary opportunity.
Oh, that's nice. He wanted to sign it. I said, well, I can just do the whole thing.
Can I sign four times?
Yeah.
I moved the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate $528,328.52, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Okay. And because Mr. Menon is on Zoom, we're going to do roll call for our vote whenever you're ready.
Mayor Riden?
Yes.
Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Steve Cole?
Yes.
Bruce Menon?
Yes.
Brian Callahan?
Yes.
Julia Walker?
Yes.
Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Thank you. And now it's time for the student representative report.
Thank you very much. All right. So for this last meeting of the year, we have some news from all four schools. First, from the Bresnahan. K through three teachers participated in their second iReady professional development session last Friday. In this session, teachers looked at how to use the iReady Classroom Mathematics Try Discuss Connect framework to support productive student discourse. Each part of this framework allows students the opportunity to engage in mathematical practices, such as making sense of and solving tasks, discussing various strategies, and making connections between representations. Second graders had a successful trip to the Museum of Science last Friday. Some of their favorite exhibits were the lighting show, the Arctic Adventure, Exploring with Technology, and of course, the dinosaurs. Bresnahan students have also been singing quite a lot lately. The downtown sing-along was this past Friday evening at Invitation Night. And last week, our third graders visited the senior center to sing along with the senior ukulele group. Moving on to the Mullen School, they had an amazing concert last Wednesday night with performances by both grade levels, the after-school chorus, the band, and the orchestra. It was highly attended. Mrs. Anikiyaro, I hope I'm saying that right, the Mullen music teacher, did an excellent job teaching the students all the skills for this concert. The Mullen School has created a Holidays Around the World exhibit by decorating the classroom doors to depict a specific holiday. We have 16 classrooms participating. Each classroom chose a different holiday to discover. Students will view all the doors and learn about each holiday. Christmas, Hanukkah, Las Posadas, Omisoka, Yalda, and Bodhi are examples of the celebrations represented. Moving on to the Knock Middle School, the second round of student-led conversations occurred on December 6. Students and families have reflected on an overall positive experience in understanding student performances, grades, and behind-the-scenes data, and were very impressed with their child's ability to lead a conversation. The advisory focus throughout the next two months will be towards student leadership, college and career exposure, and team building. The focus will shift in early spring to the student showcase as well. My congratulations to the cast and crew of the Mullen's Fall Play, A Lighter Shade of Noir. It was a great two nights of the shows. And the Spring Musical for the Knock was just announced last week. It is Matilda. Students are auditioning this week. Preparation for the May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th shows will begin right after the holiday break. And finally, from the high school. Over the past two weekends, students in the National Art Honor Society have supported many local events across Newburyport. These events include holiday fairs and festivals. Feedback from the event organizers acknowledged the professionalism of our students and the joy they brought to many children and families. The Leo's Club is wrapping up their annual toy drive this week. Through the month, they have been collecting gifts for those in need, and thank you to everyone who has contributed. The Interact Club, which is our largest student organization, has also been quite busy. They supported many events in the community over the past month, including helping out at the Salvation Army, involving over 30 students, where they organized and wrapped gifts that will help enhance the holiday for over 500 families in the greater Newburyport area. Thank you to freshman Logan McKnight for taking the lead around the December food drive at the Bresnahan and High Schools. Over 275 pounds of food have been collected to help replenish the shelves at our neighbor's table. Thank you to everyone who donated. We have many student groups who are helping to educate and improve how we manage waste at Newburyport High School. I would like to thank the National Honor Society for the work that they do with recycling management. I also want to commend Sofia Franco, who is currently working on a plan through her internship with ACES, to help us develop stronger systems that ensure we are recycling the correct items. Freshman Finn Devaney recently created a flyer to help the importance, to help highlight the importance of composting as a part of the NHS Environmental Club. Last year, the E-Club, with support from the city, purchased bins to support sorting of trash during school lunches. We still have work to do in this area, but our students have made improvements with placing food waste in the compost bins. And also, to any students listening, please consider this as a reminder that for every 75 hours of logged community service, you can earn two and a half credits on your transcript. Six students from NHS recently auditioned for the Northeastern District Music Festival, and three students were selected for these prestigious ensembles. Cedar Schumacher will play trumpet in the District Jazz Ensemble for the third year in a row. Evan Legueux will sing in the chorus for the second year in a row. And Josh Burrell will play clarinet in the concert band for the first time. All three will also audition for the All-State Ensembles next month. Congratulations to all of these excellent young musicians and to their parents. Recently, students Shannon Brock, Sophie LaFranchise, and Abni Martino were invited to perform original poems as a part of the Newburyport Choral Society Winter Concert. This was quite the honor to recognize the creativity and emotion these students exhibit through their poetry. During the showcase night, our athletics program hosted the annual National Letter of Intent signing night for exemplary students in the classroom and on the athletic fields. Congratulations to the following students and their families. Owen Cruz, Jack Sullivan, Kate Keller, Lily Laduke, Olivia McDonald, Lily Pons, and Morgan Valerie. And lastly, the College and Career Center was able to run our On the Spot Admissions Event throughout this fall. An On the Spot Admissions Event allows our students to receive an admissions decision during a scheduled event with the college or university that they applied to. We had eight colleges/universities come to Newburyport High School over the past three months. This also allows students the opportunity to meet their admissions representative in person and learn more about the school. Of the 38 NHS students that participated, 34 were offered full acceptances on the spot. And that is all from me. I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Theo. So next up, we have a student activity account request for a new club at the high school. Are you going to take that one?
Sure. It's our, new club is the Red Cross Club. And Ms. Fallon, our science teacher, so a group of students kind of got together to create this new club. They do blood drives. They actually, the students organize the veterans' assemblies at the high school. So this is a club that's up and coming, and they would like just to establish their own student activity account.
Okay. So we just need someone to make a motion to
Approve.
Approve the account? Someone would like to go ahead?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I just want to add, I think this is under Policy JJF, although it doesn't specifically say that we have to approve it. It does give guidance on the procedures related to student activity accounts. So maybe we should just reference in the motion that, subject to the procedures outlined in Policy JJF of the school committee.
Great. Do you feel that we have all the information we need to
Yes.
to move forward and approve it? Okay, so that, any other discussion? That will be a roll call once again.
Mayor Riden?
Yes.
Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Steve Cole?
Yes.
Bruce Menon?
Yes.
Brian Callahan?
Yes.
Julia Walker?
Yes.
And Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have an update on the hiring process for the Director of Pupil Services. And Ms. Keely, are you going to lead the charge? Thank you. You're welcome. Just come on up to the mic.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, what we had talked about was the screening committee that we had created for the Director of Pupil Services position. So after meeting with the group last week, I have the names and the role that each of the members that have been selected for the screening committee play in the district and as part of the committee. What we did What we did when we created this committee is we tried to create a committee that had a lot of diversity and that represented different parts of the special education organization. So we have a community partner in Andy Egmont, so she is the Director of Newburyport Recreation and Youth Services. We have Kristen Farrell, who is a CPAC member, a parent. She's also a member of the Newburyport Commission on Disabilities, and by trade is a sign language interpreter. She is also a parent at the Mullen and the Knock. We have Bruce Menon is representing the school committee. He obviously, as has been spoken about, has a longstanding relationship with the school committee, but also has a very strong background in special education. We have, from our staff perspective, so that group is considered our community members, although Kristen Farrell overlaps as a CPAC member and a parent as well. For district representation, what we tried to do is we tried to pull from our district not just teachers, but related service providers and people that touch on many aspects of the special education department. So our first district representative is Michael Nazaro, who is a district BCBA. He works in any grade within the district. Sometimes he's at the high school, and he goes all the way down to the elementary school. So he works across the district in his role. We have Jamie Kalisi, who is a high school adjustment counselor, which also represents a different part of our special education community. We have a reading teacher in Sheri Denby, who works at the Knock-Mullen. We have a physical therapist in Gillian Grel, who is, she works predominantly at the Bresnahan, but again, she works in each and every school in the district from time to time. Then what we did is we looked to have parent representation. So our first parent that we have is Renee Toth. She is a Newburyport High School parent. She is also a member of the Newburyport CPAC. She is an educational advocate by trade, so she works with other parents that are looking for support from an advocate within their own school systems. And then she is a statewide CPAC member, so she actually is part of the state of Massachusetts CPAC Commission. We have Brianna McCarthy, who is a parent at the Bresnahan School, and her, she brings the parent hat to us and also represents the Bresnahan School. But in addition, as in her professional life, her experience is in building strong performing teams from the top down. So we have that as well. We have Melanie Bollier, who is a parent of both a Knock and a Mullen student, and is also part of the Newburyport CPAC. We have Nick Marcos is representing the administration as the principal. And then both myself and Deb O'Connor, Deb O'Connor is there in kind of an advisory capacity, and I am there procedurally to make sure that we're following our processes. So those are the representatives that are part of the screening committee for the Director of Pupil Services. We have our next meeting scheduled tomorrow. And in our last meeting that we had, we talked about what the process looks like. So Mike Palladino explained what the process is and how he will play an advisory role in helping us to move forward. He also provided access to the screening committee members, to the website that his company uses, where all of the application information for each of the applicants is stored. So he provided that to them last week with the homework to go and take a look and see what information is out there for each of those applicants. Tomorrow, what we will do is we will talk as a group about where we are at with each of the candidates, what the interest level is, and determine who of those candidates we would like to bring in for an actual interview. We are going to confirm the interview date. Currently, based on the tentative schedule put forth last week, January 8th is the date that we're looking to bring those candidates in for the first round of interviews with the screening committee. And we're going to set that schedule tomorrow at the meeting. Additionally, what Mike is going to work with the group to do tomorrow is to develop the interview questions, so that we as a group are deciding what questions will be asked of these candidates based on the profile that we've created. So how do we get the questions that will actually speak to the qualities and characteristics that we are looking for in this next person to head that department? And then what Mike will do is he will assign the questions specifically to each member of the committee, so that every person has a question that pertains to how they are interacting with the special education department. So that is where we're at in the process thus far.
I don't know if you are able to answer this, but I would be curious to know how many applications you've received, and also, how many would then be interviewed on the 8th?
So we currently have seven applicants for the position. And according to Mike, if we believe, and I say we, if the committee believes that there are seven strong applicants, then he has indicated that you can bring in all seven. And that's why, on January 8th, that's why we will be determining what that day looks like. It will be based on how many people are considered to be qualified for the position based on what we're looking for.
Great. Are there other questions? Yeah.
Yeah. I would appreciate if you could share the list that you mentioned somehow with us. Maybe it's available on the website, but I was trying to write down names and...
Sure, I can share the list with you.
And what, and what you're, you know, sort of their role, what group they're representing?
Yes, I can do that.
I would say, I just noticed, you know, Bruce Menon is now leaving the school committee, and he is designated as the school committee representative. I don't, I mean, I think he could be a great community representative, but I do have a little bit of a concern that we don't have a current school committee member on that. And I don't know whether you've got any feedback from the search firm related to that, you know, having, how that typically happens, because, you know, officially Bruce is not representing the school committee.
Yeah, so I think we were looking at transitioning from Bruce to one of our current members, but we wanted to get the process moving when we selected that committee. So I think that was, we were talking with Ms. Hall, right?
Yeah, that would be to be settled, but there, yeah, he would be replaced.
As of next, in 2024, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, that was my understanding.
So is there, is there a meeting in 2023?
It's tomorrow.
Yes, the meeting is tomorrow.
Hopefully, he can participate.
Tomorrow's the first meeting.
Yeah.
When is the swearing-in of the new school committee?
Second.
January 2nd.
January 2nd.
Yeah, so you could have a new, a new member on the 8th for the interviews. Yeah, great.
Just to piggyback on that, I wonder if that's something that you all can talk about internally, like what the right process is for that? Because I understand and appreciate Member Walker's concerns, and also, to have a person who's not at tomorrow's meeting and not participating in the conversation around what are the desired qualifications and the ideal candidate, then participate in the interview and hear interview questions, they're just, they're not going to have the same lens as the rest of the screening committee, right? Like, the screening committee is getting together as a whole to calibrate and align on what it is they're looking for, and then you have a different member listening to the answers. So if, if Mr. Menon is willing to stay on, I think it would be a good idea for him to stay on. And then if we are replacing him with someone, or like, you know, adding a current member, then I wonder if that person, you know, how quickly you can bring that together. If they can attend tomorrow, that's pretty quickly, or if they can at least read the notes. But it just feels like a very abrupt transition and not a great point in the process to transition.
Yeah. Yes, if I could just make a comment. I don't intend to disappear into smoke on January 2nd. And I assumed all along that I would be working alongside somebody, so I plan on talking to whoever the school committee wants to have there and communicating what, you know, what my experience has been and what's going on. So I, you know, I'm not sure the transition will be as bumpy as people fear it's going to be.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we're going to get an update from the mayor on the proposed Whittier Building Project.
Sure. So last week was a big week in this process. The last Wednesday, the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, held their meeting where they officially took all the projects in their pipeline and decided which ones were going to move. So Whittier was in that last group. It was a very long meeting, about two and a half hours. But Whittier was the last project they spoke of. We had some speakers that spoke in regards to the project. I actually spoke, Senator Tar spoke. We heard from the mayor-elect of Haverhill. I don't think anybody else spoke but that, after that. So they did reference all the letters they received from just about all the community, all 11 communities that feed into Whittier. But they did decide to vote 5-0 to move Whittier to that build process, which again, starts the clock of 120 days. So now, there's 120 days that Whittier has to hold a vote in all 11 communities. So the one thing I will say that MSBA did mention, and I appreciated that they did, that this was the third project in a row, vocational project, to come through the MSBA project. There's two current projects underway right now in Massachusetts. But this is the third one in a row where the member communities were mentioning that they were not brought along at any point during their process. So they did address it. Again, I think what they were voting for, again, they've been working directly with the district, so it wasn't, they didn't look at it as their purview to stop this process. They decided to vote and move it on and let the voters decide whether this is a viable project. But they did mention it as a group, which I appreciated and think going forward, hopefully, that next, you know, regional vocational district will have a lot more collaboration and involvement in the process moving forward. The second vote that happened that last, that night was the Whittier School Committee vote that happened over at Whittier. There was a lot of public comment. I was there with a lot of different members. Not only, we had a great contingent from Newburyport, but there was also people who spoke from Salisbury and Amesbury, and there's some representatives from Rowley there as well, and a few other communities, as well as a lot of faculty, I would say, from, from the Whittier School District. There was some discussion. I think towards the end of this process, I believe Whittier received a letter from just about all the communities asking for some sort of pause or a slowdown in this process. I think the general consensus was that we hope something happens for Whittier. We think there's a viable option for them. They deserve a great place to learn. But the half-billion-dollar project that's being proposed right now might not be that answer, particularly since none of the communities that have to pay for it were involved in the process. So they did end up taking a vote. I do just want to commend our representative on Whittier School Committee, Donna Holliday, for making a suggestion to move the vote. Again, you have 120 days, and so the thought out there from the communities was, let's take just about all 120 days and give an opportunity for questions to be answered, for, you know, different options to be considered by each of the communities. And I honestly thought it would help Whittier's case opposed to hurting it by pausing on the vote, just because I do think there's so much negative press and information out there right now. After pretty limited discussion, they decided not to go with the amendment to move the vote to April 2nd. They decided to vote 11-3 to have the vote on January 23rd, again, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in all 11 communities simultaneously. I will say, I was pretty disappointed in our other Whittier School Committee member, Brett Murphy, who voted no for the amendment and then voted yes for the project on January 23rd. There was only three people. I believe it was West Newbury, West Newbury Georgetown, and Newburyport. I could be wrong there, but we had three, three communities that, three members that voted against having the vote on January 23rd. So that's where we're at. The clock has started. I think you've, we've kind of already seen, you know, a yes committee formed, so that will be pumping out a lot of information, and there'll be a no committee formed as well. And that's where we're at.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I know in the message you sent out, you said that there would be...
Actually, do I have a question?
Do you have a question?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have any information about what happens from our legal folks if the vote fails?
So if the vote fails, you know, obviously, the project doesn't move forward, so, you know, Whittier is saying that they will move right towards a massive renovation project. I don't necessarily think that's true or the case. I think a no vote actually gives Whittier a chance to maybe go back to the drawing board for a more reasonable proposal for a new school opposed to a half-billion-dollar school. But legally, nothing happens at the vote. They'll have to move towards some sort of renovation project, and the funding mechanism for that hasn't been worked out. I would say if, you know, let's say, you know, a yes vote happens, but let's say 10 communities vote against it, and let's say one carries the vote, then I think communities will probably try to think of what legal options they have to be a little bit more representative. I will say, looking at the other vocational projects that are currently going on, this is the only one that is set up financially to be funded this way. Again, this is based on a very old agreement, the Acts of 1967. Most of the other financial mechanisms funding the vocational school, the other two projects that are currently going on, and the project that was finished a few years ago, Essex Tech, which actually has more students than Whittier attending by a lot, and it was built for $135 million, is all tied to the, they're, they're paid yearly towards the school on the amount of kids actually that go there. Again, this is based on a different formula that was come up with back in 1967. So Bruce, I don't know if that answers your question. I mean, legally, I think if the vote's voted down, then, you know, Whittier's got to come up with, you know, what do their Plan Bs look like? I think all along, they've been trying to say it's either one or the other. Honestly, I don't know if that's exactly true. I think we get more questions out of Whittier than answers, and, you know, I think that's probably still going to be the case in this very quick turnaround during the holidays on a pretty important vote that will happen, you know, almost a month from now.
Thank you.
I had a question in your email. You mentioned that there would be, potentially be absentee voting, but no mail-in.
Right.
I wasn't sure what that meant.
Yeah, so the city clerks actually met again with Whittier the other day, so there will be no mail-in voting. There will be absentee votes available, but we're going to have to try to get that information out pretty quickly, because it actually, there's a cutoff point in early January where you can actually put in for an absentee ballot. So we'll get that. I know Newburyport will be on top of it. I'm trying to work with the other cities and towns to get their information out as well. But there's a pretty small window after the holidays to make sure that you, if you're not going to be here on the, on the 23rd, again, 1, 2, 3, January 23rd, that you put in for that absentee ballot, so we can have a good representative vote.
All the colleges, thinking of my son and all the college students.
Sure, colleges, people that go away to Florida for vacation, a huge amount of those as well. So again, you know, all the arguments we made that January 23rd is not an ideal time to vote, who knows what the weather's going to be like that day? Again, they were only required to have an eight-hour voting period, which is why they went with 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Again, I don't think that's very representative. Why wouldn't you just say, hey, look, let's give people a chance to vote before work, after work, move forward? And there wasn't many really sane arguments made why the vote should happen then. Again, I think a lot of this was predetermined by the building committee in Whittier, who have just been, again, been doing this on their own these last few years. They've, they said they started this process back in 2016, and then they got into the MSBA program in 2019. And like I said, we asked our representative Brett Murphy, who's been on the committee for 20 years, how many times did he come back to us to talk about this project? And I think we all know the answer. So again, I think a lot of these things were predetermined. I think, they think this is their best opportunity to get a new building, and I think they're willing to just kind of rush it and see it through and see how it goes. So again, I just encourage everyone, wherever you stand on this, educate yourself these next couple of weeks. And like I said, on the city side, you know, obviously, we can't take sides, but we're going to make sure we have all the information out there so people can read up and have all the information that they need.
Thank you, Mayor. Were there any other questions or comments? Ms. Walker?
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, I do think what's been discouraging for me about this whole process is the, the lack of communication or the need for communities to go seek out the information versus that information coming to us. And it does very much feel that there's an attempt to do this a little bit cloak and dagger, like the behind-the-scenes. And I, and I don't necessarily think that's the intention, but unfortunately, I think that's how it's perceived. And none of, none of us at the table have a direct responsibility. You know, the mayor's been an advocate, but all of us are just votes on January 23rd. I mean, we don't have an official role until, well, even then, it's really up to the community at large to figure out how best to fund this if it passes. So I think, I think that's discouraging. I would say going forward, it, you know, Whittier comes to us for, not to the school committee, but to the city for a budget request... committee, but to the city for a budget request every year. I think, you know, going forward, I think I'm going to have questions certainly about how, how and what they're funding, what they're asking for, why we only hear from them once a year. You know, I, I would like to see them come back. I think, you know, having a former school committee member now as our representative for Whittier would be great to have former Mayor Holliday maybe come back or, and, and whoever the other representative is, come to, at least to report to us periodically and probably to the city council. I mean, I just, it's just been very discouraging to feel that they had an opportunity to communicate this. I think they probably could have done a different way, might have gotten a lot of community support. And it just seems like it's really, like they're starting off on a bad foot, yeah, not putting their best foot forward, I guess what I want to say. So I mean, that's just a general comment.
Thank you. That's appreciated. We are, we are, had actually talked about having some more regular updates from the Whittier reps. Think that would be helpful moving forward. Great.
I mean, I said to Ms. Hall, like, when I spoke to Dawn Holliday at the meeting at Whittier and said, I want her to come to every one of our meetings, and told Ms. Hall put that on the agenda because we need to know what's happening, not find out weeks and weeks later. And if it's every other meeting, because they only have one meeting a month, that's fine. Cloak and dagger's a great term. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to get into our subcommittee updates, starting with you, Mr. Callahan.
Hey, we talked about Whittier. We, we had a handful of other things, but really it was dominated by that conversation. And there was a lot of historical reference from Mr. Cole, of course, very much appreciated. But one thing we did talk about is that, you know, no matter what, we have to make sure we are not and don't appear to be judgmental of the students in this whole thing. And that's, that's obviously correct. We're not judgmental of the kids. It's just the process of how we're going to pay for all that and the communication between that district and everybody else. But that was pretty much the whole meeting. And we had some great, some great egg sandwiches for Steve's last fincon.
Yes, thank you.
That's all.
All right. Ms. Walker, policy, have you had a meeting?
We have had a meeting. We, we did move, review policies. We've made it all the way through to K, KL? No, to L, which is the last section. We will, and we're losing our rep at the MASCE. She's retiring. Dorothy Presser, maybe some of you had a training with her, she's retiring at the end of the year. And we are going to, so we'll revive this in the new year, but we have made it all the way through. We've gotten all the recommendations from MASCE and had a chance to go through them with, with the MASCE rep. So I think it won't be hard to get the new policy committee members up to date. And then we'll bring forward those for voting by the full committee in the new year. We are also trying to make sure that the web state, webpage stays up to date, even though we're in transition on the webpage. We also have another option that we're exploring, which is to have MASCE host our policies in a searchable database, which would mean that it wouldn't matter what happens with our webpage, MASCE would maintain it basically the way we've had it maintained on ours. So I think we're going to explore that. No superintendent's going to look into that. But for now, we have policies A through D in a PDF format on the site. You'd have to download it and search them. And then the remaining policies, we've kept up there until such a time as we have the PDFs uploaded. So that's, unfortunately, it's a little clunky, but that's how it is right now. As I mentioned last meeting, please reach out to me if you want to know what the current policy is so that we make sure you, you're looking at the most currently approved one. So, yeah.
Thank you. More to come. Okay, Mr. Callahan, you just had a meeting.
Back again.
Fundraising committee, yes?
Yep, this afternoon. We met with John Ritchie from the PTO. It was good. The PTO, similar to the NEF, I mean, really the boosters. There's not a whole lot that we don't know how they do things. We talked about the field trip buses at length. The one thing I was surprised about was, not surprised, I, I said that the communication about, from them about how the money gets to us to pay for it, it never really goes to the school district. It's, they get the bill directly from Salter. So field trips happen, Salter gets contracted, somehow the bill goes to PTO to pay the bill, that's it. The way it's always talked about is that we give the school money, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows that never, you know, changes hands with the district. And the one thing we spoke about was teacher wish lists, which happened for a number of years. The teacher says, I need markers or whatever it is, and then the PTO then reaches down to the community, and then some parents buy the, buy that item at the store. I guess if it's for a special occasion, I guess I, I support that, but in general, things that are, how you run your classroom, and I keep saying this, whether it's a whiteboard or markers or a stapler, there were some of the items on the list were just like standard office supplies. I don't think we should be asking parents to pay for those things. And if we can get that into the budget reports, like that super, you know, down granular line items, that would be great, you know? Especially if we have to go before city council and say, and they're thinking about, you know, cutting $2 million from the city budget as a whole, we have to know what we're actually asking for. I'm sorry, I'll go back to that Whittier meeting. The funny, the funny thing they said was, don't worry about it, that you're not really going to have to worry about this in your budget for two years now. Like, oh, so later you're going to have to come up with $2 million. It was such a weird marketing pitch. Anyway, so that's what the fundraising thing was today. And the final one is January... Well, no, I'm sorry. We have one, January 22nd, that's the NEF, right? Yeah. And then January 12th, Athletics Department. So, and then hopefully we come up with something solid to tell everybody about. But I trust that Ms. Walker will come up with the language for that. She's very good that way. You wanted to be on?
I'm staying quiet.
That's, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. And then we're going to get an update on SISL. I'm not sure who's starting that.
I'll lead off. So SISL has met twice so far this year. We haven't given an update yet, so we'll just do both. In October, we met for the first time, we did introductions. There was new student members, which was great, new parent member, and then some teacher representatives as well. We, I provided an update on our school committee summer retreat, some of the things that we are looking to do this year, our priorities, new communication strategies, and just an overall overview of what the school committee does for our student reps. And then the main item on the agenda from Ms. Ippolito was the early literacy screening process. So just gave the whole group an update on what the process is, what the regulations were that led to the early literacy screener, how our students get screened multiple times throughout the year, and then the communication process back to parents.
And then I attended the November meeting. And for those who don't know what SISL is, it's the Curriculum Instruction and Student Life, I think it's the, a subcommittee of the superintendent. So we are, Ms. Higgins and I are representatives of the school committee to a superintendent's committee that also includes other representatives from across the district. And the focus of the November meeting was the student, I'm sorry, the school improvement plans, which each of the principals presented for their schools, which I think that the key takeaway for me, and you'll, this is included in the packet, but it was really nice to have these presented in tandem with each other. You know, you sort of see the synergies across the different schools, both, both the unique needs for the schools, but also the, the ways that these, that, that there's some collaboration and discussion about how each of these schools are, are working together. And to Mr. Cole's point, we, you know, one of the benefits of having all the students in Newburyport go to the same schools throughout their, their lifetime in the schools is that you do also have that ability to coordinate and collaborate between the schools. And I think it makes it a little bit easier on that front. So, yeah, so the details are in the packet, but, you know, I really appreciated the, the perspective of each of the principals and their staff, which was also informed by the student, by the, the school councils. And I believe we'll have a presentation probably at a future meeting on the school improvement plans as well, that then inform the budget. So it sort of sets the stage for the budget, so very helpful.
Great. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to new business. I will say that we have cake in the kitchen. So everyone who's here, please stay and join us for some cake. Any other new business? So the, I'll do the motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we'll need to roll call this. Yes.
Steve Cole.
Here.
Lee Ridley.
It's a yes.
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 We're going to record it as a yes.
Sarah Mo.
Yes.
Bruce Menon?
No.
You're overruled.
No cake for you.
Brian Callahan?
Yes.
Julie Walker?
Yes.
And Brianna Diggins?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I'll eat your cake, Bruce.
Yes.
Bruce, you want to stay on to watch people eat cake?
Save me a piece. Don't give it, don't give it to the superintendent.
It won't make it home.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.